I'd like to call to order our meeting of the Troy Board of Education this evening, Monday, February twenty- ten. Twenty- ten.
Our pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rice?
Mrs. Porches? Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mrs. Packard?
Here.
Mr. Raddick?
Here.
Next will presentations from board committees. Mrs. Porches is not here, so we don't have an update on Hayner.
I'm on the hearing.
Are you on the hearing board now?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Um, I was at my first meeting last week, or last month, and it was very enjoyable, pleasant board. Very nice people.
Just like this one, right?
Just like this one, just like this one. But it was very brief. They typically are, and it was a half an hour overview, just essentially, they were, they're having a Valentine's Day fundraiser. Um, they do a lot of trips, those plan, and they sell out very quickly. And I did print out a calendar of events for the Hayner Culture Center for January through June. So, I mean, I could pass these out to you guys over there, and you can take a look at them. But, other than that, there wasn't a lot of new business. Oh, the, uh, and the Young Art Awards are coming up, the Young-
Masters.
Yeah, the Masters are coming up, so those will be on display if they're not already.
No, I think that starts right at the end of this month, the twenty-
It should say on here, probably.
Is Mr. Matthews?
Young Masters, April twenty-eighth through April twenty-
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, February twenty-eighth through April twentieth.
Coming up, but-
Yes, the end of the month. So, there you go.
Thank you.
If anybody wants a copy.
Yeah, I think like deception and the rest of that.
Yep. That's it.
Mr. Fox? Upper Valley?
Uh, yeah, Upper Valley. Um, we've got two new board members this year, um, Carrie Murphy from Covington and Kelly McMacan from Pickwa. Both are, uh, fulfilling a, the remaining one year on terms from previous board members who resigned in the middle of their, uh, three-year terms, so, um, they're both on, uh, each of those boards, uh, school boards that they are representing as well. And I think they intend to continue, uh, after this year as well. Um, couple of updates on the fiftieth anniversary, um, that we have celebrating throughout this year, the twenty-twenty-five, uh, year, is, um, Distinguished Alumni Event is March twentieth at the Career Center. Um, the first week of school, they're gonna have a big back-to-school block party, uh, celebrating it, some open house tour things. And then, um, in December, will also be a big open house for, uh, the kickoff of the, uh, new, uh, the new, uh, new buildings that we have. They should be done by December, so, um, that's typically when they have open house for the sophomores to go up there and, um, explore the Career Center. But then with the new buildings, um, they're gonna have some additional things going on then with like, uh, the governor, you know, people from the State House will come in as well. So that'll be in December, the exact date's not set on that yet. And then, um, some Troy news, uh, our junior, Troy Junior High team won the robotic design contest at Wright State last month. So congratulations to them.
Thank you. Um, moving on, we have guests here today from Hook Elementary.
Mrs. Johnson, you wanna make introductions? Or introduce someone who will make introductions, or however you wanna do?
Yes, I'm gonna run the show.
Okay.
Not the show. I'm Trudy Johnson, the principal at Hook Elementary, and, uh, we have Mr. Guston here with our Hook Student Council. So, let's go all the way down, so they can hear you.
You feel free, yep, yep, whatever you need to do. You good?
Go ahead. You're good. You guys can start.
Hi, I'm Nick, I'm the head treasurer of Student Council, and I help Kaplan.
I am Dan Bueker, I'm the treasurer of Student Council, and I also help Kaplan.
I'm Abram, the other treasurer of Student Council, and I also help Kaplan.
Hi, I'm Charlie, I'm president of Student Council, and McKendee is not here today, but she is vice president, and we will help any of the students.
I'm Glenn Weal, and I'm the secretary of Student Council, and I'm here today on all the programs.
I'm Lila Murray, I'm the sergeant of student council, and if students want us to be named by the strike, and if the strikes are adopted, we can tell them.
I'm the mayor's sergeant, and I'm a member of student council.
I'm Ally, and I'm a member of student council.
Hi, I'm Stephen, and I'm a part of student council.
We have meetings, um, every week unless there's an event. We usually have meetings for student council opening and closes, this student starts each morning.
This gives student council members a chance to sell school supplies, and lets younger kids have a chance to use their money and learn how to be responsible.
Student council hosted a field drive for one month, and if kids need food, we hope we can sell their families and donate food to the community.
For Valentine's Day, we are selling carnations to all.
Student council purchases carnations for each student at our school, in, in honor of kindness of students.
Student council hosts a Valentine's breakfast for all the students, and we apologize if their families request.
In student council, there's lots of responsibilities. One of our responsibilities is making sure everybody are good for moms.
Student council members are role models and people that younger students look up to.
Thank you all for writing lists, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you all for sharing that with us. So, all of your fundraisers through the year, does that help you purchase, what does that help you purchase? Go ahead.
It helps us with future events and future projects for our school.
Davis, ready? Do you guys have anything for them?
No, I think it's pretty cool that you have three treasurers, it must mean you guys get a lot of money coming in, so, um, that's, that's good.
You would see the condition of the money that we do get from little kids, they're all long on whatever, several coin collections that showed up in our school.
Well, I, I would like to talk to, you said that you're the sergeant in arms, so are you planning on replacing Mr. Piper's position when someone gets out of line?
Are you all fifth graders? I apologize, Mr. Raddick.
And I was gonna ask too, for the sergeant in arms, without getting specific, have you ever had to wield your power? No, that's good, that's good.
How do you guys get elected? Tell them how you get elected.
Um, if a student makes a slideshow and presents it in front of all with their hand, we take a vote, and whoever gets those votes gets one vote.
We also, like, all make sure that we didn't vote, like, all of our friends, that we would, people who thought would be best, which we get, who would be the best vote.
How were your positions assigned, like, vice president, sergeant in arms, treasurer? Go ahead.
We also take votes on that, we took votes on the field.
Okay.
What leadership opportunities has this gonna be?
Being just able to, like, we should, being able to lead the, um, food drive and all these activities, and also organizing all the food on the, um, food drive shelves.
We, they probably fed-
Could you get back to that slide?
Yeah, sure. Um, they probably fed ten to fifteen families at the holidays, plus provided food for the food, uh, for the food pantry. Let's see, it's right here.
I was gonna ask about that, it looked like a lot.
It is a lot of food. It, the whole hallway, and they organize it by the product, and, and then it comes all the way into the nurses' station. It's so much food.
Wow.
Do you guys know how many items you collected over that drive? Any idea? Just out of curiosity. I know it's a lot. Okay, alright, I was just curious.
What you see there is probably only a quarter, because we restock it every day, so as it uses, so we have another storage room to keep stuff in, so that it is neat and orderly to, to be able to grab. Um, I think that also, we, we might have to talk about the present.
Yes.
Um, our school provides, uh, gifts both, and council's not involved with this, we try to make this very private for the families, but gifts, needs at once for about forty-year students. So, the same families that come in for those gifts go through the food pantry, and it's just awes- awesome experience.
Does every elementary school do this, or just Hook?
I, I, I'm not sure.
I think, I think most of them, if not all do.
They all do, okay.
Do you guys have a list of recommendations you have ready for Mrs. Johnson about how to make this school better and that kinda stuff? Are you guys working on that?
We actually have a lot of good ideas along that, I mean, it's just hard to implement everything.
They have pages of ideas.
I'm sure that's not the problem.
It's a great group, they work really hard. They're there every morning, you can rely on, to open that student store, I mean, it's totally student-run. And, um, the carnations too, that they're selling right now. But they have a gift for you guys.
Oh, for me? Thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you so much, thank you everyone, thank you all.
You wanna ask them to introduce who brought them?
Thank you for coming tonight, we're, we know you can't drive yet, I'm guessing you can't drive yet. So, could you introduce who came with you this evening? If you guys wanna go down?
Yeah, we'll just start with Nick, like you started before, go ahead, Nick.
I'm Nick, and I'm the treasurer of Student Council.
Who'd you bring with you?
Who came with you tonight? Could you point them out to us, would you wave to them? What's his name? What's his name?
Hi, Larry.
My mom and dad brought me. My mom and dad brought me.
Are they in the room?
Abram has especially, his dad is also a principal.
Yeah.
That's why you're being so quiet.
My mom, grandma, grandpa.
What?
My mom, my dad, my mom, my dad. My mom and my sister. My mom.
What?
My dad.
Thank you so much, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of this meeting, you do not have to. And we would happily understand if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you so much, you guys are doing a great job for your school.
It's a great job. You're very well-prepared.
Student council!
This keep until Valentine's Day, you think? Can I just give this to my wife?
Yeah, go ahead. Can you call us when you want?
Yeah, yeah.
We can just give them all to you.
Cross my name out, put hers on there.
Yeah, it's just, we can just give them all to you.
When is that?
That week, have, she'd have six, she'd have half dozen.
It worked.
Yeah. I was like, you know, her family, she was like, yeah. I love her. Dude, so she's starting to get that form, she's doing good, she's doing really good.
And then I will put these out, and my answer's no.
I told her, I didn't just now see.
It's so good to see your own.
What a good time, it was a poor, it was a poor, it was a-
Yeah, I just kept ignoring it.
I didn't get that call, and I'm like, wait, what, what is happening? And you, so I'm in my, I was on the table for three years, and I, it was like, I was surprised.
Yeah. It's like, yeah.
It was awful, so awful, I just was so hurt. Oh, it was so, so hurt. Yeah.
Like, I appreciate-
You can feel this.
Yeah.
It's, it is okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Dr. Moore, do we have anything for the first, the first hearing? Okay. Thank you. Uh, moving on, a motion to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from Monday, January thirteenth.
Submove.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Any questions?
And the work session, February third.
Oh, and the work session-
It's all in there.
On February third, thank you. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Next, we have the financial report of Exhibit C, a motion to discuss and approve the financial report, please.
Submove.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
Second.
Mr. Fox? Mr. Rice?
Highlight the income tax collection at the end of January, comparing that to the prior January, we are up about eighty-five thousand dollars for the quarter settlement, which is good news that that continues to grow a little bit. Uh, also, a couple of larger differences within the, um, forecast for the year, um, the property tax advance that was expected being in January was delayed because of an issue with the county attorney's office, so, we're a little low for January, but March will-
It'll launch out in the-
Be a little high, so, it'll catch back up.
Is there anything else that's trending one way or the other, that's-
Um, I think reported last month that, um, medical claims are back in line, that continues so far, uh, this month, uh, we are all caught up, I believe, with our, um, reinsurance reimbursements at this point, uh, so, we're looking pretty good.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Rice?
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Moving on to then and now, uh, prior certification of funds was not obtained before the contract or were involving the expenditure of money was made as described, this school officer may and said certain fund. A motion, please?
Submove.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Rice?
Couple from Hayner, a couple from, three from the high school, and one from St. Pat's. Nothing major.
Okay.
Couple of those are just timing right at the month end, so.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Rice?
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Okay, Miss, Miss Piper, you get to give the good news.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of donations.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Miss Piper?
Yes, it's our favorite part of the agenda, where, uh, we get to thank our community for the support of our staff, students, and programs. So you'll see a variety of donations there, from material donations of hats, gloves, uh, all the way up to donations of thousands of dollars for our program. So, we appreciate each and every one of those, no matter how big or small, uh, we'll put them to good use. And our February total is nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-two cents, and our year-to-date total is one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, which, which we appreciate.
Very generous, community.
Very generous.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Second, we have a resolution authorizing the special education model policies and procedures. Um, this is a direction from the state for us to adopt these policies, correct?
Yeah, it's a new state law that requires us to either vote to adopt these or come up with, or, so.
Yeah.
Uh, motion?
Submove.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
Is there an exhibit that should be listed off here?
There was a link through, like, Chris has-
I sent a link in the board notes, um, so I don't think we need an exhibit here. Yeah. It's a, it's a model policies handbook that the department puts together every year. Um, I put a link to that in Friday's board notes, so, this is a new requirement, um, enacted by Ohio law this year.
Okay, I think I looked at it, but just give me a second, just to-
Is it anything different than how we-
It's like a fifty-four page document.
Does it change how we operate today, or?
Nothing materially, no. I mean, there, there are minor changes from year to year, but all this is dictated by law, which, oh, do communicates what those policies are, and provides us some forms that we use those kinds of things. So, nothing would materially change what we do.
Is this the, that includes the bathroom bill that you talked-
No.
Said out about?
No, this is a very particular set of policies, um, that the Ohio Department of Education has put together, that kind of guides, the guides processes, procedures for special education, those kinds of things.
Okay. Do we have that later on, in that policy update later on in the meeting?
No, that will be probably in the, um, March or April meeting. We haven't met with the rep yet. I shared some information for that upcoming, but we'll, we'll vote to approve those later. So next year, next month, we'll have a first reading of those policies, and the following month, we would have a, a board adoption.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Any questions?
Uh, no question, no further questions, thanks.
Anything else on the special education policies? Mr. Rice?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution authorizing SD design documents and estimates. The adoption of the following resolution is recommended. Mr. Rice, do I need to read the full resolution?
No.
Okay.
Nope, that's fine.
Need a motion to discuss, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
Second.
Mr. Fox?
As I mentioned, last month, with, um, that resolution that was approved, that there'd be several others coming forward as we move throughout, finalizing each step of, uh, the design phase, and this is the next one on the docket, um, with the SD design documents and estimates. And I believe a lot of that information was covered with our work session, so, this is just making everything efficient.
Okay. Any questions?
No, not after that work session, so, it was good to go over all that last week, thanks.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Okay, Miss, Miss Piper, you get to give the good news.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of donations.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Miss Piper?
Yes, it's our favorite part of the agenda, where, uh, we get to thank our community for the support of our staff, students, and programs. So you'll see a variety of donations there, from material donations of hats, gloves, uh, all the way up to donations of thousands of dollars for our program. So, we appreciate each and every one of those, no matter how big or small, uh, we'll put them to good use. And our February total is nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-two cents, and our year-to-date total is one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, which, which we appreciate.
Very generous, community.
Very generous.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Second, we have a resolution authorizing the special education model policies and procedures. Um, this is a direction from the state for us to adopt these policies, correct?
Yeah, it's a new state law that requires us to either vote to adopt these or come up with, or, so.
Yeah.
Uh, motion?
Submove.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
Is there an exhibit that should be listed off here?
There was a link through, like, Chris has-
I sent a link in the board notes, um, so I don't think we need an exhibit here. Yeah. It's a, it's a model policies handbook that the department puts together every year. Um, I put a link to that in Friday's board notes, so, this is a new requirement, um, enacted by Ohio law this year.
Okay, I think I looked at it, but just give me a second, just to-
Is it anything different than how we-
It's like a fifty-four page document.
Does it change how we operate today, or?
Nothing materially, no. I mean, there, there are minor changes from year to year, but all this is dictated by law, which, oh, do communicates what those policies are, and provides us some forms that we use those kinds of things. So, nothing would materially change what we do.
Is this the, that includes the bathroom bill that you talked-
No.
Said out about?
No, this is a very particular set of policies, um, that the Ohio Department of Education has put together, that kind of guides, the guides processes, procedures for special education, those kinds of things.
Okay. Do we have that later on, in that policy update later on in the meeting?
No, that will be probably in the, um, March or April meeting. We haven't met with the rep yet. I shared some information for that upcoming, but we'll, we'll vote to approve those later. So next year, next month, we'll have a first reading of those policies, and the following month, we would have a, a board adoption.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Any questions?
Uh, no question, no further questions, thanks.
Anything else on the special education policies? Mr. Rice?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution authorizing twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six memberships in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Motion approved.
Mr. Fox, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Fox?
Well-
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
I meant, is there any discussion?
No, it's all, it's just a normal-
Yeah, annual resolution, but one thing, we typically have the card to send back for you to sign tonight, they sent us the wrong card, I noticed that today, so we'll get one for you to sign. We have, we have a couple of months, so we're fine.
Any other discussion? Mr. Rice?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Raddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of the Troy High School twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Plans for Learning. Motion, please?
Submove.
Mr. Raddick, Mrs. Davis. I know, I have some questions, just for clarification, does anyone else have discussion also? Mr. Raddick, Mr. Fox, I just don't wanna jump in in front of you guys.
Go, go for it.
Um, so do some of the programs that are being removed get replaced by another program?
Not necessarily. Typically, the majority of the removals, um, that you're seeing this year are from years of not using those courses, we haven't offered them, and some of them, there were staff members who have been here twenty-plus years, it doesn't, last time, it was like, it was just, we don't typically remove, but Speech Three and Four, like, we've not offered that for such a long time. Um, so those were a couple of those examples. However, there are a few in here that were removed because, like, for example, the, um,
And what that does is that just means all seniors take that same course. And so that actually like helps with scheduling too, because then they're not singleton courses. So when a student wants just one course, it's only offered one period. It really dictates what they can take in other times, but if they have it like, well, I can take a second course then, then that opens their schedule up to, to have some flexibility. So anyhow, they're very excited about that comparative part. But again, that won't involve any new sets of reading or curriculum or anything. They're just using that like a combined comparative class.
Thank you.
Oh, I noticed a lot of Edison classes are highlighted as weighted classes. This is a change that they weren't weighted previously or?
Some of the blue is what's new. We've all, I don't, I've just, as adopted over the years, I don't know when that started, but in the actual like Plans for Learning document, that way, every weighted course has always been highlighted yellow in here for years.
Okay.
Yellow is not new, blue is new. So if it's, if it's highlighted as yellow, that's just part of the Plans for Learning. It's always, so every single course that's weighted has always had a highlight of yellow.
Oh, down on the, okay, I think.
I don't know if it's in there, Chris, give us a summary of it.
So some courses are not CCP, but still we, you know, our honors courses and Spanish for.
How's our numbers? So the, the ones that are Edison are those kids, students are either going up to Edison or taking online through Edison. They're not taking, our, our teachers don't teach in Edison classes, is that true?
We do.
We do.
Yes, so we partner for Edison, we partner with Edison for almost all of our CCP that is taught here. Any course that you're seeing in this Plans for Learning are the courses taught on our campus here by our teachers. We do not list the Edison courses that they could take through Edison on their own. They just use their course catalog for scheduling that. We don't include that, theirs, their catalog and ours. So everything that you see in here that says like that little signet that has the Edison next to it, those are all courses taught here on campus by our teachers that they get Edison credit for.
Okay.
Those classes, English classes, math classes, science, our pen and our bio CCP classes, those are through Indiana University, everything else is through Edison.
Okay. So on those ones that our teachers are teaching for Edison, are they paid any differently for those, teaching those classes or anything like that? No?
No, they have to be certified through Edison though, we have to send them their transcripts.
Yeah.
And they have to certify that they have 18 credit hours in, in their field, not just like Masters in Technology or Masters in Education, like it has to be in their field. So I just think it's pretty remarkable to think about the number of teachers that we have teaching CCP classes. That means how much time they've spent in their field of study outside of the traditional bachelor's work. So it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work.
So we don't get any additional pay. We do give them one additional day for grading purposes because those courses can be a little more demanding. So that's a range that we worked out years ago with those teachers, kind of an incentive because it's a college class, so it's, writing is more, there's more work outside. Even now, the reporting of the grades, student university, they have to take care of all of that because the students receive a transfer from Edison or Indiana.
It's a huge benefit, the number of in this building classes that our students got. I mean, I, I can speak personally for my son, the number of CCP credits he's been able to get while not having to leave campus and still be a part of the Troy High School community. It's a huge benefit to our students.
Yeah. Drive Edison?
Pardon?
I didn't drive Edison.
So did I, from Brussels.
Uphill both ways.
Yeah.
In the snow.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
We have a Troy High School marching band trip to Indianapolis, Indiana for November of 2025. I guess we're planning ahead, really well done. Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mrs. Venema?
Yeah. So we are really proud of the success that our marching bands have through the OMEA organization, which is great. But we're also wanting to increase the exposure and the experience that our students have. And so we would like to take them for a performance in the Music for All Bands of America circuit. They host their end of season event called Grand Nationals in Indianapolis, Indiana. So what this will do is it will allow our students to perform in Lucas Oil Stadium, which is an incredible venue. And also we'll let them watch bands from around the country, if not around the world, and really see how marching band, how music education is done in different parts, from really small groups to really large groups, and really just kind of get an appreciation and some education about how this activity is done. It is a day trip, it will be either the 13th or the 14th. It's a prelims situation, so we won't know when our performance time is, but it will be one of those two days. We're not going to stay overnight for that. So that's why the schedule reads the way it is.
Understood. Any questions? So it's not a competition?
It is a competition.
It is a competition.
Yeah.
So is there, is there a chance for another trip if it's prelims?
So we're very proud of our students, however, we are probably not on that level.
That's fair.
There is a semifinals and then a finals that is held the rest of the weekend, but we're, we're happy to be there. We're going to do our best and, and put on a good show, but we don't expect to make it past this.
There's going to be plenty of pictures from the prelims.
And it goes from like two days down to the top 30 bands in the country. So just, it goes from around 200 and some down to 30. So it's, to go to prelims is a, is a very small percentage, so we are not alone in that.
Anything else? Mr. Price?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Next, we have the Troy Junior High 8th grade trip to DC. It'll be traveling in May. A motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Mrs. Davis. Mr. Parker?
They've taken this trip for a number, number of years now. They're veterans and pretty good at it. Happy to answer any questions you might have, but I think it's a great experience for the kids and one they typically enjoy very much and behave very, very well for, and it's a good experience.
At, at this point, I see just 8th grade mention. In the past years, it's, we've mentioned 9th grade, was that just due to switching from 6th grade and not, not all the students having a chance? And is it now just only 8th graders?
Yes, there was 9th grade included one year because we had to cancel the trip due to COVID. Yeah. So this is just 8th grade.
Just 8th, all 8th grade, okay. Appreciate the pictures and the Facebook post and things like that. It's always, as with all this stuff, it's neat to watch them in this one too.
What percentage of kids go?
Oh, I could give you a good guess, and I'm going to ask Dr. Moore to guess first. He probably has a little more inside knowledge this year. I'd, I'd say, I'd say the same, around half. I mean, the trip is, it's not cheap.
Right.
They do, they do a lot of fundraising. I know they've worked to keep the cost down, but it's not a cheap trip.
Right.
We wish it were more. As someone who has chaperoned that trip before, not here, but before, it is a great trip, but it.
I believe for this coming year, they, they had to shorten the trip just to keep the costs. Because the cost of travel.
So say, wasn't, didn't it used to be a longer trip or has always been four nights?
They shortened it.
They shortened it a little bit.
I thought, okay. Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Okay, personnel items?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Dilla?
So fairly light agenda tonight. We're kind of in that season of the year where we're starting to have people notify us that they're retired over the years. So that list is longer than the people that we're hiring because we're going to be up for hiring season. So I just wanted to point out a few here. A lot of excellent people who have done great things here in the district. Between Linda Burkey, Marla Gooden, Elisa Johnson, and Dave Paul, who've got 85 years of experience in the district. So 28, 28, 17, and 12 will be those four. So Linda's done a fantastic job of it. Concorde is the admin assistant, has managed that big building for a number of years by herself. Marla's been driving the school bus for 28 years. Anybody that can drive a school bus for 28 years? I, I, I'm going to give her a clock, because that won't do it justice. She's driven Miami kids, she's driven lots of kids, she's just been fantastic. Always has a smile on her face, she waves to me every single morning, she's just great. Elisa's done a fantastic job there at the Junior High's Food Service. And then last but not least, Dave Paul, our athletic director, has done great things here in the last 12 years. So I'm excited for him to be able to move on to other things and free up his time. It's a pretty busy job to be the athletic director of the L R High Schools. So move forward or whatever is next for him. But that's, that's kind of the highlights of my personal.
For the athletic director, do we have an opportunity to hire someone in May or early June and have a crossover time of a couple of months there?
So we're going to post that position soon. And the goal would be to have, but we'll talk to whoever the successful candidate is. We'd like to have somebody this spring in terms of, we know who it is, they know who it is. And then if need be, maybe give them, I'm just going to extend the days or something along those lines. If there is some type of crossover. The nice thing with Dave's position is he's here till the end of July, so we've got a really good time there to work with that. Do our next athletic directors.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
So that concludes the items that are on our agenda. We do have two guests this evening, Dr. Moore and you. Okay. So the second hearing of the public, and these are for items that are not on our agenda. Mr. Bush, you requested to go first.
Tell them to state his name and address.
Sorry, can you please state your name and address?
Andrew Bush, 2665, Philston Court, here at Troy, Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
So I've got some questions pertaining to state, you may pretend to. Bullying and harassment act here at Troy School and what our policy is and reform leading up to it. So give us a second. Again, there's been, what was it, recently in Concorde's move that came my attention. One of those incidents was at Troy, going to a school, and that student was suspended for three days. Upon return from that school, made a threat to another student involving a gun, and seemingly a gun violence. Again, a, a three-day suspension was given, and that student was allowed to return the same week and making that threat and returning from previous suspension a lot back in school the same week. So it led me to a conclusion, and I'd just like to begin by stating each of the student handbooks only containing three sentences in regards to Ohio revise code, Section 331, 3.666, district policy prohibiting harassment, intimidation, bullying required. It is disappointing to see that there is no mention of the student handbooks on the ultimate bullying reporting. Nor was there reference to the actual district policy 5517, which was last updated in September 2018. In light of a recent situation, Concorde, a student bringing a fake gun to school threatening to shoot another student, I wanted to express my concern that there seems to be a lack of clarification in how behavior incidences are recorded in this district, as well as how behavior coincides with the discipline policy. I'm always appreciative of the cooperations of the staff and administration. I believe there is a need for more cohesive method and overall behavior reporting reported. In my experience as a parent, student behavior issues will go undocumented. They seem to be minor, it may be easy to resolve. As we know, a case of harassment requires that a student suffers from a threat on multiple instances from an accused bullying, so without a paper trail of past minor behaviors, it makes bullying difficult to prove, report, and determine disciplinary actions. I've spoken to families with children who were involved in negative situations with the child who brought the fake gun to school. Even though the school was aware of the child having issues with others, I do not believe the accumulation of these other situations impacted the disciplinary outcome. This is why I feel that this district needs a consistent method to document all behavior, document all behavioral issues, small and large. Behavior situations are discussed over phone calls, emails, sometimes face to face, but I do not believe that all of these behaviors are being documented. Incorrect, and every single behavior incident is being documented. I would ask that the district clarify the process clearly with its failures. I understand that there are detailed procedures in place for reporting bullying and harassment. Though without evidence of prior incidences, it is difficult to prove and determine issue with appropriate disciplinary action. Unfortunately, many parents in this district do not know how to appropriately handle communication with the schools when a behavioral incident occurs. With all due respect, parents are inundated with communication from schools. Now, I would venture to say most parents are unaware of how you can find the district policies on the website or that, or there is a bullying incident report like available. I want our parents to feel confident in the district's procedures. I want the procedures for harassment, bullying, intimidation to be more concise, as well as to get a better understanding of how that applies to the disciplinary system. I would also like to see more clarity in the discipline procedure and how types of disciplines are determined. I understand many times this is on a case by case basis, but I believe that there can be some clarity in this district's discipline policy as well. Too often I hear about bullying in our schools. And as a coach and a mentor inside the community that spends time with a lot of these kids, primarily ones at Concorde Elementary, I feel it's a shame to have, to have the word mentioned again and again in regards to the district. I want the parents of the district to feel confident in the policies and administration whether they can send their children to a place that prioritizes being proactive, keeping these kids safe, safe from bullying, safe from harassment, and safe from being inundated by others. I have a person who ties some of this, but it's, it's more about policy reform. How do we get information out of the parents and families and keep kids in fact to be safe? In, in my own instance, I can tell you that some policies were put in and that the school itself did a, did a fantastic job. I take my hat off to Mr. Hay, at Concorde Elementary, did a fantastic job handling things. You'll never hear a different statement from me on that. I don't believe that the full case law for this child was taken into consideration, and, and I don't feel that the appropriate disciplinary action was given in terms of how those other incidents took place and severity of, of the issue that was at hand, especially coming off of one suspension and getting the same exact suspension over again, when obviously the first punishment didn't help change the behavior. So that, that, that is how I feel about it. I know there's a semi-annual report that's supposed to be published. I don't know that it has been published, and if so, I'm like, or I'm asking you to go out for where the semi-annual report is published and the last time it was updated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Thank you for looking out for our students. Mr. Piper, do you want to go first?
Sorry?
Do you have anything?
Uh, the semi-annual report was last updated last week. It's on the website, if you just go to the website and search bullying report, you'll see it.
Is, and I think you've explained previously, the definition of bullying is very specific on what gets reported on there is, is a, can you just maybe refresh us a little bit? Is a, a threat, a verbal threat, kind of like maybe was made in this situation? Would that count as bullying and show up on the, that report based on the definition?
It in and of itself, no. Bullying and harassment is defined by the Ohio Department of Education. I think some of the components of it, he mentioned in his, in his talk there, has to happen over time, multiple incidents. So the challenge is what has transpired? It's not a very clear cut line for any administrator to say the third offense is bullying or the fourth offense is bullying. There are, it's a bit gray, it's defined, but it's a bit gray. So any building administrator would have to look at the history of port reports, the severity of those to determine if it's across the threshold for bullying.
Can you speak to the documentation question that Mr. Bush had about, when does it get documented? Is there consistency across the district?
Yeah. I, I believe there is to some, to some degree at least. We do have reporting systems for our schools, like we have a, the name of it just escaped me. Where do you guys? Public School Works. Public School Works, we use that tool to document behavioral reports. Now, having been a principal, I will tell you that not every conversation as you walk around a school building with a child and you see something in the moment gets documented, but typically things that are referred to a principal's office would be documented in Public School Works. So I'm not sure in this case, how many or if at all, there have been documented cases or incidents.
That's, that's probably not public, is it public information? What gets documented in there, not because it's based on?
Yeah, it's, it's student privacy.
Yeah.
When I mentioned incidences, when you talk about incidences, incidents with the child for bullying, it's incidences between the same two parties, correct? The bullying has to be between party A and party B. Those have to be multiple incidences just between A and B, not party A, B, C, D, E, F. It is just incidents between party A and party B in terms of, not that that child or student has had issues with B, C, D, E, F, one incident with each, it has to be multiple incidences between A and B, correct?
So I'm going to turn to the board. This is a board meeting. We don't typically do question and answer, but I'm hap, I'm happy to answer the question. I am happy to talk outside of the meeting. What would the board prefer?
If it's a succinct answer, I think it's a fair, I think it's fair to, if it's a succinct answer, I think it's fair to answer.
Okay, sorry, I just had to ask. So it can be both, either or. I mean, if there, every, again, I say every. So as a person walks around a school and sees a child doing something in the moment on a playground, ideally, every interaction would be documented, realistically, though, probably not all are. So it's, it's both with a. With a particular student who is doing the bullying, um, the, the principal would look at the incidents with that student and others, or an individual, or all of the above. Um, it just really depends on the situation.
Thank you.
And we also have another person that wanted to speak, Amanda Gibson.
I am here just to ask for questions, clarification, and to provide some information to the school board.
Can you please state your name and address?
Amanda Gibson, 532 West Franklin Street.
Thank you.
Um, the toy fake gun situation was brought to my house by high school kids shortly after all this transpired, because obviously younger siblings, conversation happens. Um, and I went to the Detroit Police Department to acquire photos of said toy guns. My question for the school board is, to me, a toy gun is very apparent that it's a toy gun. I'm not very well versed in firearms, but a toy gun is a toy gun. This gun that was brought to Concord Elementary was questioned by several adults as to whether it was truly a toy gun. Um, in this report, it also states, Mr. Piper wanted a second opinion to confirm that it was a toy gun. So I'm concerned about the leniency of Detroit School's policy where gun violence is concerned, because if a child can bring in a toy gun to school, and this can fly, what else is allowed to fly? Um, I really want the school board to have this, so you guys can see the factual information, not be persuaded to believe that this was a keychain toy gun. Please, I don't need that back. Thank you. Yep. So I would just ask that we review all of our policies, our communication. Um, I personally have a high school kid, I get corresponded to a Mrs. Teacher, Mrs. Teacher in that building, very often. Announcements, things that are important, things that aren't important. I think that, at the very least, all of the Concord family should have been made aware of that. I will also tell you that, um, when it was brought to my attention, I asked in the mob room, and I had several, several teachers from that building, as well as someone from the bus department, reach out to me and say, thank you for posting that, because we were not made aware of any violence, or that we needed to be alert to anything, and we're afraid. So that's why, 'cause there's gotta be a better way. There's gotta be a better way, and there's no room for any violence in schools in curiosity. Yes, those were teachers in that building that were not notified.
Are you two in correlation, you two, together talking about the same incidences?
Yep.
Okay. Just making sure we weren't talking about two separate incidences. Okay.
Um, Mr. Piper, is it, did, did we notify, was there a mass notification to the families of Concord?
I don't believe so, no.
Is it, I guess, when, when do we typically make those type of, an issue?
Yeah.
Gets notified, and when does a issue not get notified?
Fortunately, it's not typical. There is no typical. Um, it, it's a judgment call. I would say if the, if the object is going to create some panic or cause for alarm, that would be the case, yes.
We would.
We would notify.
We would notify.
Yeah.
That would not work. That's a school.
Who makes that call?
Building principal. I mean, usually, if something like that happens, they're reaching out to central office as well.
To alert you, to alert central office this has happened in our building?
Yeah.
We've gotten in the handbook that says, we all have to be notified under the gun violence page, but I'm with them. I, at, at least, if parents weren't notified, I would expect that the rest of the Concord teachers at least be notified. I mean, they don't need to speak on a student, or their name, or, you know, bring it outside of the school, but I do think parents...
We will review.
I'd be happy to talk with anybody who wants to give us a call and talk more about it, maybe.
But the, the policy that, I guess, is this, is your concern about the safety, or is it the policy itself?
The policy itself, or the safety of our kids.
Which, what policy numbers are you referring to?
Okay, Mr. Piper, can you hear me again?
I think you stated some policies, Mr., and you were ta, I'm sorry, you were talking, I couldn't hear everything.
......................................................
The one that I referenced was on page A in the handbook, it's just under the gun violence, 'cause I was wondering, since it was the same occurrence, I saw the superintendent can increase or decrease the date, and there's no, that's what I looked there for, to see if there's anything that says whoever needs to be notified, but there is none. But I also don't know, in this situation, what, obviously, it's concerning.
So I guess I'm asking, in a situation like this, you would like the entire?
I'm waiting for the board docs to load, so I can read it.
Okay. I'll go back to Mr. Bush. You would like for the entire, I, I, that school to be notified that this happened?
I would like at least for the grade of class, right, if that, if that toy, weapon, whatever one of the class designers comes into that, in the life of a child's classroom, and actually is showing it to multiple parties, and that gets back out in the community, that there was a toy gun in that building. The building is one thing, I would at least think that those that their child saw it, and were in the same exact classroom with that, would be notified that, hey, this was brought to our attention, it took multiple teachers, it took a second opinion from a firearm specialist, to identify this was a court. I would think that that class, and those that had seen the gun firsthand, would be notified. My child was not one to see it firsthand.
So when you say class, are you stating that classroom, or the entire grade?
At a bare minimum, the class.
I mean, my, my son found out, and he's in first grade.
So, I guess, our point is, it, it gets out there, right? Whether you're in the class, in the grade, or in the building.
Absolutely.
It's there. So my, my stance would be that, yes, we notify everybody in the school building, because everybody is at threat. And, and as we're talking about it, right, I mean, I, I think, I told you, the school did a fantastic job of trying to address it, but there's so many details that are left open-ended. They're gonna go back check, is that child riding the bus? When's the back check gonna take place? Who's gonna perform it? What if that person's not there that day? There's some details missing that, in order to feel that every child is safe in that school, I, I would need some more details about how they're gonna handle that situation, right? Um, you know, when you say that you're gonna keep this child separated from another child, or multiple other children that have incidents with it, how many feet are we gonna keep them separated by? Again, what administrators, what teachers are tasked with that? Because my issue is, we all send our kids to school to be safe. Somebody's gotta guarantee me that my child and every child in there is 100% safe, and if we know there's a known occurrence of multiple incidents, of a, a kid bringing a toy gun and threatening another child with gun violence, I, I would think that we wanna put that out there. We wanna let the grade, the class, the building, the, the school system know that these things are happening, and we're addressing them, and we're taking the, you know, disciplinary action necessary to change that behavior. So my, my main question in all this is, how do we reform the policy? What is the next step? Is it another board meeting? Do we have to put it on the agenda? I really like some guidance from the board. How, how do we get involved and help? I think that's the main thing, the parents want to help. How do we get involved in, in help, and, and selfless move potentially happening to somebody else? So that's what we're for.
Well, certainly, just to make sure that we're doing everything absolutely possible to keep guns out of our school. I mean, all you have to do is to fix a school search, there's, there's a huge issue federally with gun violence in schools, and I pride myself on my kids watching for city schools, because we're great here. I will shout that from the rooftops, and I came from Pitt, I graduated from Pitt, I'll still tell you Troy's better. We're great here. But I wanna know that every single person involved, from the top to the bottom, truly has the best for our district in mind, and is doing everything possible for all of our kids, all of our admin, our lunch ladies, our bus drivers, everyone, everyone across the board. And with all due respect, um, I was contacted by someone outside of the district that let me know that there has been bullying issues in the past, that haven't been taken seriously by our superintendent, and that even made me more afraid to know what happened prior to come. So I just wanna know that these kids, and these teachers, and these people that I spend every day caring about, are really being protected and cared for, and that every policy that can be in place is in place to be sure that every kid in our district is safe. And if there's someone coming in that isn't part of that safety plan, then maybe for city schools isn't for them. Maybe we have to find this child or children that are causing problems, an alternative education opportunity, but we have to protect ours here, right? Or at least have a plan in place that we can confidently say, we're gonna get behind this, and we believe in this.
Well, I think in reference to what you're talking about, like sending out district information, we have to be careful about that, because there's laws in place where you can't, I mean, privacy laws to protect that student.
Yeah, we can't talk publicly about student discipline.
Yeah.
No one's asking.
I know we, we haven't mentioned any names, we're not here for...
I just wanted you to understand that, like, we can't get into, like, sending out a district notification, say, this child did this, this, there's privacy laws there.
I think your request is, an incident happened. Your request is an incident happened.
Yes, they would say.
This happened at your child's school today. This is how it's being addressed, that's your question.
There was multiple, so when we talk about the incidents, right, a lot of what I said in that speech is, how do we tie those incidents together? What I was told is, these are two isolated incidents, they are not to be looked at together for disciplinary action. Okay? Student A brought in this weapon, served his suspension, this is a completely separate incident for the threat toward another student. Therefore, it will be evaluated as a separate incident. It was deemed to be a low threat, and therefore was given another three-day suspension. So I, I don't want you to think that, that I didn't have conversation with the building and, and the administration, and, and Mr. Piper himself, we had, and they, they've explained everything they can to me, so, and I believe they've done what maybe the policy allows them to do, therefore, I think the policy needs to change. That's, that, that's where I'm at, I don't believe those should be separate incidents. I don't believe that a kid bringing a gun into a building, a toy gun into a building, and the day he returns from a suspension threatens another child about shooting him, those can't be separate incidents. And if we open that file, and we find that there are other acts of aggressive behavior, harassment, bullying, or violence, those have to be looked at when you look at the, at the punishment for our latest incident. That's, that would be my, my biggest point in all this, is I don't believe our policy allows for that, and if it does, that policy is not being followed.
Understood. So as we talk about policies as a board, that's something that we have to review as a board, and...
The student handbooks.
The student handbooks, there's a cycle for this, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And so that's something that we can take back and discuss further. Is that the...
If I may, like, I think at the heart of this matter, and I think we're talking about two related but different things. One is the bullying procedures, processes, discipline, all of that. The other is this particular item that was found, this young man had in school. So, um, in the student handbook, as, as was alluded to earlier, it says, um, where is it? Um, "As defined by Ohio law and for purposes of this policy, an object that is indistinguishable from a firearm..." Indistinguishable from a firearm means an object made, constructed, or altered so that to a reasonable person, without specialized training in firearms, the object appears to be a firearm. Again, for context, I've seen some of the pictures, and I think some of the pictures are difficult to provide some scale and understanding. Those are scales we're not that familiar with, I'm not sure where they came from, but for scale, this thing measured two inches by an inch and a half, that was the size of it. So did it look like a firearm? Yes, but it's, it's extraordinarily small. You can't get your finger into the trigger part of it. So I think size is important here. I don't think a reasonable person would say that is a firearm. It's a judgment call.
Would anyone care to read the report first, right, Katie?
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I can't stand...
Thank you for sharing this report.
You're welcome.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the, all the pictures, but I'll say, I'm a firearm owner myself, handgun owner, and, okay, first picture I look at, and I see the scale, okay, super small, fits in the palm of my hand, probably, probably not a gun, but also, I don't expect that everyone who isn't a firearm owner, or all the staff, or other students who may see it, would know that that's too small to be a real gun. But then, when I saw these other pictures of how this toy comes apart, it looks, I mean, this looks like a real gun, that it comes apart, and then there's a magazine, and there's bullets.
And a carrying case.
And a carrying case that a gun comes in, like, this is, it blew my mind that it looks this real, and this is...
That was a, Katie, that it was a replica gun, not a toy gun.
Yeah, this, the picture surprised me a lot, and I...
I think that's...
I can't, to me, it looks like it could, it could be a real firearm, and it's, it's scary, I mean...
It's scary, thank you.
Um, I did, so, I, I mean, we, the issue happened, we responded, but in my opinion, the, these pictures, maybe there should have been more of a response, um, in the, in this situation. It's, yeah.
Have you talked to Mr. Piper, do you have any review of his personal file after he read it, right?
It was under review, Mr. Hake was doing the review, so I'm not, I'm not here to cast stones at anybody. I, I wanna understand what the policy is, and read, read the policy, is anything that is deemed to potentially be a weapon, right, and you need, you need to be able to tell that it's not? I think you can tell by looking at those pictures, if I'm an 11-year-old child, I don't know that's not a gun. It's got an ejectible magazine, bullet in it, a slide to cock and eject it with it. I mean, I've, I've read about the, the toy, the replica, whatever we wanna call it, right? My concern is that if that's not deemed, after multiple teachers looked at it, a resource officer was then requested to call in for a second opinion from a firearm specialist, and you're telling me it wasn't deemed a threat? That seems like a lot of professional people to bring in, a lot of adults and professional people bring in, that multiple children had already seen this toy, and you can't, you need to tell me they're gonna be able to distinguish when the adults and the resource officer couldn't distinguish without getting a second opinion, and without hours of deliberation? To, to me, that, that's where the policy, even though it may be gray and vague, if that gets through, what else gets through? If that gets through, policy needs change. Perpetual needs change. That, that, that's my stance, and, and I know this is probably going over anybody who wanted to go, but I myself have firearms. They stay in a gun safe, right? They have home defense bullets in them. We take the right precautions as firearm owners to educate and, and protect those in our house, 'cause that's what they're for, right? The last thing I want is kids exposed to that, that don't have that training, are clear for it, or if he feels that's okay to bring in, we need to address that, and make sure that the policy clearly states for every parent that that's not acceptable. No matter what you're teaching at home, that piece of, of toy is not, is not warranted in our school. And so to me, that's where the policy has to come into play, right? How do we, how do we change this? 'Cause I don't feel that should be brought in, if that gets in, what else is getting in? That's the policy that I want to address.
So I think that's, so I, I really appreciate, and thank you for giving us all of the context that you have. I, I gotta apologize right now, we're not gonna have any answer for you today.
We need to next question.
Please know that it is...
We should know what's next.
So we have to review our policies as well? Please, please, if you have input, please share it with us, share it with Mr. Piper, share it with Dr. Moore. Pardon me?
Okay, yes, we are out of time for this, but yeah, like, as she said, we're gonna have to review policies, look at them, see what's more specific, see exactly what's going on. We have to talk to Mr. Piper, and, and see exactly what was implemented, as far as the punishment, if that was according to policy and, and things like that, but it, it, we will have a discussion about it.
When you say we can reach out, is there a forum, should we ask you that, or email?
Please email us. All of our, you have Mr. Piper's email address, all of our email addresses are on the school website.
Should be.
Mr. Fong, I hope he's in here. They're all on the website to reach out to us. If you have something to say, please call us, please email us. Please continue to attend meetings.
I would say, should we continue to attend meetings, or in regard to this issue?
I, I don't want to discourage you from attending, but I also will tell you, I don't know that we'd have an update next month.
Sure.
And that's not in a flippant way.
No, absolutely.
We can, we can check in weekly.
You're more than welcome to check in.
And when we have an update, and when that policy is up for?
So there's usually a reading, right? Anytime that there's a policy change.
For which policy? Well, yes, for board policy, there are updates as legally necessary, yes.
And those are made to the public?
Now, those are also board policies, that you can review any policy at any time, okay? So there's two policies we talked about, well, there's two board policies that pertain, one of which we've not spoken tonight. There is a policy about weapons in schools, and there's another policy about bullying. Then, also, there's student handbooks that get revised and presented and approved, typically every summer. So it depends on what we're talking about. I think we're using the word policy broadly. A lot of this is covered in the student handbook.
I would say if you reach out with an email outlining your concerns, we'll provide an update when we have one for you, certainly.
Yeah, I, I think bullet points would be better, not that your presentation wasn't, but it was five and a half minutes, so it was a lot to take in, and I kind of got lost in the middle, honestly. And then, you know, Amanda Smoke also, yes, and so I, I was a little convoluted as to specifically what we were honing in on, and then.
Well, and we only had just a few minutes, we were more.
Yeah. So bullet points, probably.
But I know we can email the board, that's great.
You're more than welcome to.
Thank you for your time today, and for listening and for hearing. I think that as parents, sometimes we feel like things fall on deaf ears, and I definitely don't feel as though things fell on deaf ears with the board view tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
I just want to say, when you email us, we have to be careful on having a group discussion in an email response back, because that's against the sunshine laws.
Yes.
To have those type of conversations, so even if you email all of us, which is appropriate, expect the response either from the board president or, or Mr. Piper, but we, like, Teresa can't say something, I can't chime in with another email, betad in, and all of a sudden then we're violating.
Can't deliberate and.
We're violating the sunshine laws.
We can't collaborate in writing on email, that breaks laws.
So, just to, if you don't get a response from all of us, it doesn't mean we don't care, it's, we just kind of have those laws that we have to abide by as well.
We appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sublived.
Second. Ms. Fox first, Mrs. Davis second.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Reddick?